Okay, let's get started. Seven o'clock. I call the meeting of the Planning Commission to order on June 19th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. And we'll start off with the approval of the minutes. Hopefully, everybody got a copy. Any discussion? Mr. Staley? Okay, make a motion to approve. Mr. Watson, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Any?
Can I have one suggestion? Thank you for working so hard this last minute.
(laughing).
Appreciate it.
Ah, you know what? I sent him over today. I said, "Let me know if this is okay."
That's your law record.
My personal thanks for working so hard on the minutes last week, last month.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so minutes are approved. Zoning referrals, there are none, correct? The only thing we're working on is the parking policy review, which we asked everybody to do a little homework for this meeting and take a look at some of the recommendations from Mr. Hibansky and to let us know if there are any changes or questions. Anybody? Mr. Staley?
Um, I agree with Mr. Hibansky, who has knowledge and who has done the study of multiple towns. And I've been doing another thing this month, so, you know, I'll yield to his proposals.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hibansky, you want to add anything?
I just wanted to add one thing. I know last week, we were talking about, or I'm sorry, last month, we were talking about whether or not a garage parking space counted towards the home occupation. And although it doesn't speak specifically to it in the regulations, for the past 25 years, we have always treated that as a legitimate parking space. So I said that it didn't, but upon speaking with the zoning enforcement officer, it does indeed count. So I just wanted to relay that back to the commission to correct my statement.
Okay. Thank you for doing that research for us. I think that helps out. Any other comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I just, I have one comment I have. If, um, does that have to change the wording in the, is there any reason to change the wording in terms of the garage space, or should they specify in there that the garage qualifies? You can count that as a space?
I'll let the commission, if they have any thoughts on that before I respond. If no one does, I'd be happy to answer.
Go ahead.
I don't think we need to. I think that, you know, it's, the garage, as long as it maintains the appearance of the garage, I think it's pretty intuitive that that parking space should count as an off-street parking space. And, you know, I think we want to be wary of requiring too much parking, particularly encouraging people to pave too much of their front lawn, their side yard, their backyard. And I think that allows the zoning enforcement officer the flexibility to count that space.
That's one question that I keep looking at, looking at our, um, our future with our permeable surfaces. And that, it seems to like come up every time I look at something when I'm thinking about a lot of this. Would it make any sense to try to incorporate some of that verbiage into this in terms of non-permeable? Because in general, maybe I'm wrong, but we could then start to establish space that's used all the time and space that's used some of the time. And what we currently are saying, if you look at, I'm, I'll just refer to the section where we talk about residential businesses. We talk, at one point, we talk about having a turnaround and no parking in the front yard, which in some cases, we don't, it would automatically exclude houses for that very reason. If, but if we could say that they could do an existing driveway with permeable surfaces, then we're not saying you're going to pave your whole front yard. We're saying you're going to create an option that will reflect when you need parking for business hours. And yet, the other time, when it's a home, you still have those, I don't know, I mean, maybe that's too complicated to think about doing, but it would seem to me that it's much more future-looking.
Yeah, it's a really good point. And it's something that I'm actually, I have been working on, how to address the amount of impermeable surfaces here in town. And one of the things that I've been researching is what some other towns have been doing across the US. And one regulation, I can't remember where it's from, talked about, you know, the bare minimum requirement for a primary use. So let's say a single-family dwelling. Let's say the scenario is a single-family dwelling with a small home occupation of a, you know, computer-based business. The primary use requires one parking space, which is a single-family dwelling. That can be an impermeable surface. Any additional parking that is provided has to be a permeable surface. So...
You're talking about Stratford's regulations as we exist right now?
Exactly. That's something that I've considered. And then that would translate over into the, let's say, someone wanted to build an office, an office building, and it required 50 parking spaces, but they wanted to provide 75. The 50 could be impermeable, but anything more than the minimum actually is required to be an impermeable surface. So they have the pavers with the grass that can grow.
Wait, wait, say that one more time so I can...
Permeable.
The 50 are...
Fifty that are required are a, are, can be an impermeable surface. I got it.
And that's per state, that's per state building codes?
Yep. Anything more than what's required can be a permeable surface. So I think that should be addressing what exactly what you're talking about.
It is. And primarily, what we're talking here is renovations or new builds. So if we want to take the burden of us of having to provide that 40% less permeable, then it's going to be up to the builders to do it. And it's going to be through adaptive reuse of some of these facilities where I don't think, I know it's more expensive, but it's not going to kill any project. And if we tell a developer, "This is what we need you to do," and if they think it's going to get me one step closer to getting my project approved, then it seems to me that this is the place to do it. And we would kill one more part of our coastal resilience problem. The only other thing that I, in reading through all of this information, I went back through all the files on parking that I could find, and I probably have some of the wrong ones here, but the only other thing, and it goes again to coastal resiliency, there is nothing in our regulations about parking under buildings for residential. And I know that the buildings that are being built down on, um, on the seawall, those buildings would be perfect because they're being built on stilts. All the neighborhoods, they're going to have to be stilted in the next 20 years. Those places are going to be moved back from the water, which means they're going to have less property to do it. And some of them might be forced to use the under the building space as parking. It makes perfect sense in terms of using that space in a way that's, the only way it can be used. Can't be livable space to begin with. Can't be full garages, but we could say, maybe it's the time to think about this in, maybe if it's limited specifically to any adaptive reuse or any flood zone home that's raised, we will allow under the building parking. I don't know.
Which we do.
We already, we already do.
We currently allow for that. Yep.
So although, well, so it's not in our parking requirements? It currently is.
Just configuration of the building allows for the surface parking.
Okay. Because there is something that says here, except in that opening paragraph, this gets me to the opening paragraph that I was saying, that it seemed, didn't seem clear to me that we were talking, when it says indoor parking in that sentence. That, I don't know.
And making the regulations in their entirety more readable is a, certainly a goal. And the intent of this is really to actually, is even more simple than that, which is to actually create a requirement for certain uses to actually have to require some sort of parking. And I agree with you. I think that making them more legible and concise certainly is a goal.
What I'm looking at here, and I don't know if this is your latest, the one that I went through, but what I'm looking at here, this came from, the Section 12 heading, that's the one I found. I assume that's the text that we're going to eventually, everybody's going to say yea or nay to.
Anything that's in red on, everything that's in black is...
Is still already here.
Is already in there.
Okay.
The only changes are in red, where you see a strike through.
So the spreadsheet that you sent us with all these number changes ended up being like five or 10. So I think we should vote on this and send it on its way because it's obvious you've done more homework than could ever be done on parking. I don't know if there's any more discussion. I don't want to shut anybody down, but I think we should move this on to zoning.
With the recommendation?
With the recommendation that, that it, that it...
But we don't have a formal application. This was more work, a work session.
Right.
If you folks feel like you would like me to push this forward, it doesn't even require a...
A vote from us.
Oh, okay.
You could vote and say, "Jay, we would like you to do it." And then I'll prepare the application. It'll come back to you all for a formal recommendation.
Well, I want, I think we should vote on it because...
Make it official.
You've put, you've put a lot of work on in this and spent a lot of time, and we've spent several sessions discussing points. So I think a vote would be good, helping zoning, because I don't know if they've gone through the same process. They shouldn't spend as much time as we did on trying to come up with. So I move we vote on this in the affirmative to send this to zoning, recognizing the thoroughness of our planning administrator, Jay Hibansky, for doing his research and giving us the recommendations that he, that he has.
Okay.
How does that sound?
Got that? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vigliotti. Any further discussion? Mr. Staley, I think you put your hand up there.
Yes, I did. Just questioning impermeable. Are we talking like concrete with stone, concrete with grass? Like to have an atria on that emergency exit?
I'm not sure what's there, but basically, anything that allows for water to permeate through the surface. So there are some pavers that have, you know, fine stone dust or grass that are in between the pavers that allow for sheet flow to stay on that surface as opposed to off into the storm sewer or onto another property. So that's how I would define it.
Are you comfortable with this?
Am I comfortable with what?
Moving forward.
Yes, I am. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Otherwise, I'll call the vote. All in favor of sending on a favorable recommendation for the changes that Mr. Hibansky has researched thoroughly and provided for us onto the zoning commission? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? It's easy having four people here. Okay, so, we finally got past that. That has moved on. Now, next is the campsite plan review.
We have no campsite plan reviews before us or 824 reviews either.
Okay. Then moving right along, the discussion on the town plan of conservation and development. Any comments at this time? Mr. Watson?
I do. And I would like to ask if we can get any kind of a legal statement of the, of the weight of the POCD. When we went to our training in Fairfield, the, I forget his name now.
Bruce Hyde.
Bruce Hyde made it very clear, at least in his speaking, of the legal weight of a POCD. And I've heard all kinds of stories that it's purely something to be considered, but it doesn't have any legal weight. And I would love to hear how our legal counsel says the weight of that is based on statute, because it's in, it's in the state statutes. It's a requirement that we do this. It's, we legally are required to do this. So I want to find out if we can actually have something to say to people when they say, "That's just a piece of paper. It's old." And if we, if that's the truth, then we have to live with that. But if it's, if it has weight, we should start saying that it has weight and either rewrite the things that we don't like or make the amended amendments to it the way they, some places that need to be, but also get more buy-in on talking points that are clearly outlined in terms of priorities that are just, time just keeps flying right by them with no one discussing them and giving them any kind of weight. So...
I can certainly request something from the town attorney's, an opinion from the town attorney's office. And I'll just give my two cents on that. You know, the POCD, in my opinion, is something that's a roadmap that was thought out over a three-year period with public input, with elected officials, as well as town employees. So it's always been my stance that the POCD should be followed. And if it, if it, at some point, the town or, you know, town officials, planning commissioners, town council decides that there's something in there that just isn't right, the best, the best practice should be to amend the POCD and make it the way that the town wants, as opposed to an application, let's say, an application comes in that is inconsistent with the plan of conservation and development. My stance would be, if a board wants to approve it, first what should be done is the POCD should be amended so that, because all of our decisions, as you all know, are based on their consistency with the POCD.
Right.
And in order to, you know, proceed in a professional manner with some consistency, not just with the POCD, but in our decision-making, it should reflect, the POCD should be reflective of what decisions our boards are making. So that's how I would approach it. But I'll certainly send something off to the town attorney and see if they can get us...
And this is not...
...of the POCD based on its reference in the Connecticut general statutes, right?
It's really a directive for us, how we view it, because this document is, planning's document, that we really need to live by. So if that's true, then we need to find out how much weight does it actually have.
It also has been approved by the town council, correct?
Absolutely.
So...
Not that much weight.
I'm sorry?
It's obviously that much, not that much weight. After the recommendations last month...
Yes.
Of Curtis Volkswagen.
Kern Road, yes.
It...
Well, there have been a couple of examples, certainly. That was one of them. Also, a few meetings ago, I was, we talked about having a meeting with the mayor to discuss the plan of conservation and development, you know, any changes. It's five years into the plan now. Should we make any adjustments? How are we doing so far with the plan? What have we accomplished? What's on the horizon? What are our priorities? Things like that. Because of the budget and some other things, I haven't written her a letter, but I will try to set up a meeting between the commission and the mayor and her staff if she deems to bring any of them. So that would be another way of knowing what the strength of the POCD is with this administration. So I'll make sure I'll do that.
Do we need to do anything more than that? Is that enough for you to act on, Jay?
Sure. You know, I think the meeting with the mayor regarding, you know, the status of the POCD, I, yeah, I have no concerns with that. And I think that's always a good idea, you know, get a pulse on, you know, who's doing what and who's pushing things forward and what things are some departments may be stuck on or having trouble getting done based on whatever the reasons might be. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, but also, to your point about making changes to the POCD, this would be an opportunity to do that. It, as I said, it's five years in, we're halfway through. So, Mr. Staley?
Yes, so, be, moving forward, I'm an optimist. And if, how would we change the POCD, make amendments to it, when we have one coming up again soon? Do we, I mean, it's very costly, and if we don't follow it, oh, I'm not sure why we're even, we're going to do amendments.
Yeah. I don't think we'd change it completely.
In reading the statutes, we do have the ability to go in and change it. We can vote on this. I would assume that we'd have to send it to town council, or someone would have to send it to, to have them vote on it also.
I would also assume we'd have to have a hearing on it as well.
You're probably right also, that we'd have to do both of those things. But, so, we could, even if it's just the will of the planning, just have a, an addenda page at the beginning of it saying, "These are the things that planning need, that planning has on the list of revision for the next one. These are the points that we think don't reflect accurately in what's, what we're doing right now or the changes and those kind of..." I mean, even if we were to insert a document in there like that with just a simple acknowledgement, because there are things in here that we are not doing, we never will do. There are old ideas that aren't, that aren't ever going to happen. There are other things that we're never going to have the money to afford. There are things that we have better knowledge about. We, this document was forward-thinking when it came to resiliency, but we have a lot more information than we ever had when this document was written. So that will change greatly what's in here in the next revision. But there are things in here that we could refine, assuming we had another, another intern to come in and want to do that kind of work. No, no, another intern, I'm sorry. But in any case, I just think it's worthwhile. And I think it also would be clear to developers that come in, to you, if they could look at this and say, "Might not be the 100%, but it's a better idea" of what they're looking to do. And some of it is, needs to be acknowledged. When you go through here, there are five-story buildings in a lot of these illustrations. So we have it in here. If we're going to have a five and six-story building in here, then developer looks at the POCD and says, "Well, Stratford wants this."
The other thing is, we, where do we stand on the planning administrator position?
The town planner position?
Yeah.
The town planner position, I believe, was posted to the town website today.
Oh, good. That's progress.
Thank you, everyone. I was going to wait to...
Oh, sorry.
No, I'm glad you did. Thank you to everyone for all their work in pushing, pushing for, to reinstate the planner position, because that makes a difference when our elected officials get behind, get behind an idea. It matters. So kudos to all of you.
Also, that position may help us take a look at this document and come up with some more ideas and recommendations. And I don't think we're going to make a lot of addendums or recommendations to change it, you know, but I think a good plan should always be looked at periodically and change and adjust.
Well, the only point that I was trying to make is that, from reading what's written in the statutes, that there is part of the language in there that basically says that this document should be a rolling document. It is not set in stone. That the information in it should roll and reflect the town as the town changes. That every 10 years, it's not you make a whole new document. You've already collected what you need to change, where your vision has changed, and you simply are revising based on the facts. You don't need to essentially reinvent the whole world again. I think it would be better for us to do some of these things in small bites, even if it's when something comes before us and we say, "God, we wish we had been clear about this." That might be where we take another half hour and say, "Let's put this into the document. Let's get this ready for when they, the next time they do it, so we don't ever run into this situation again." That's all I really wanted to say.
Okay. Mr. Staley?
I agree that we should be, once you do a project and you put a master plan together, you don't have to put another master plan together.
Could we just take a break and let Gail?
Sure.
Just a five-minute break in the action.
Absolutely.
I don't want her to miss anything either, because Mr. Staley's going to save some really important things.
Should we follow her, next question?
Well, if we don't hear her soon, we'll... There she is.
You okay?
All right. Allergies.
Is that time of year?
Absolutely. So where was I?
Okay, we're back in session here.
So I was agreeing with the master plan that...
Yes.
We do not have to reinvent the wheel. Addendums are good, and we look for professionals to guide us. And they know more than we do. We can help them. We could do projects here and there, but the, I think the addendums and small attachments noted is the way to go forward.
I think we all agree. So with those couple of action items, with the town attorney opinion, and I'll set something up with the mayor, we can start proceeding on that. If there's no other discussion, we'll go on to number six, which is a discussion of Section 5.3 of the zoning regulations. And I believe Mr. Hibansky sent us a housing data profile, multicolor, housing data profile from 2018, to give some information about what our town looks like, at least, well, right now. I guess most of it's 2015 though, right?
This, well, this was, these are the numbers from 2017, so the report was from 2018, I believe.
Okay.
And just to follow up on what Chairman Petuski said, is that, you know, I added in the housing profile from the Partnership for Strong Communities as a guide as we look at the bedroom equivalency report that I had put together for you all, so that you might get a better understanding as to kind of what the housing stock looks like currently here in Stratford, and comparing that to the county that we're in, as well as statewide. And a part of that is the reason why, when looking at, when comparing Stratford to some of the other communities in our county and statewide, some of the areas that I think that we might, there may be a gap in the diversity of housing that we have. And that's part of the reason why I would like to, I put together the report for Section 5.3, because it's a broken regulation that really, all it does is stop any apartment development. If you look at the numbers that we have, we, I think that there is a lack, like I said before, I think there's a lack in the diversity of housing. I think that we have some concentrated areas where we have it, but I don't think that's ever a really great idea, is to have all of your apartments necessarily in one neighborhood separated from everything. So as the zoning commission, as I presented this to the zoning commission, they felt that this was more appropriate for the planning commission to, you know, hash out some of the long-range planning implications... So, as the zoning commission, as I presented this to the zoning commission, they felt that this was more appropriate for the planning commission to, you know, hash out some of the long-range planning implications that it might have. And, you know, whatever recommendations that you folks came up with to direct that to me and felt that it was something that you were interested in pursuing, I would put together some applications or, I know, more research or, or nothing. You may feel that this is, where it sits is, is what's most appropriate here for the town and I'll respect that decision that you folks have.
Now, currently, the 5.3 basically limits the number of bedrooms that we can have in various sections of town and we are at the limit in all of our sections of town.
That's correct. It's, and it's bedrooms that are dedicated to any residential development, eight units or more. So if someone wanted to build an eight-unit townhouse somewhere, it would be subject to section 5.3 and because our cap has been met and there are no more bedrooms left, no one would be able to necess, no one would be able to do that.
I've really been thinking on this a lot, because I've been looking for other reasons. I've been looking at the racial and economic and age composition of the 10 districts in Stratford. I also am always concerned about income equality and I think part of this hits right at the heart of that. I just want to throw out an idea and I don't know, I keep thinking about, I live in the fifth district, in the sixth district. Sixth district is mainly, primarily, single-family homes. We have very few multifamily homes, nor do we have much space. So a lot of what would happen if we wanted to have apartments in my immediate district would mean tearing down some kind of residential housing in order to accommodate that. So you'd have to tear down three or four houses in order to build eight additional houses. Now, on space, that might make sense, because the minority base in my neighborhood has gone up 5% every year. Now there's becoming noticeable, it's not huge and it doesn't match every district in Stratford, but my, my neighborhood is really, reflects America in many ways and I wanted to keep going in that direction. I just would love to throw out an idea and it's very abstract and I haven't thought it all the way through, I will tell you, but I keep thinking about this 824 because, I mean, the 5.3, because as long as I've had anything to do with planning, it's been on the discussion. We discuss it and we ignore it as fast as we can and then it comes back up again and we discuss it and we ignore it again as much as we can and I don't think we're doing any great service by leaving it the way it is. I think what we ought to recognize is, why do people want it to stay? And most people want it to stay because of status quo. And I think that status quo tells us, speaks most to inequality in this town. Status quo means that we build multiple housing in the areas that are lowest income and that's the way Stratford's always done it. But that's not, that's not to say Stratford's bad. Every town in every part of this, of this universe has done the same thing. What if we were to look at each district throughout this map, 5.3 altogether? Look at each district and say, how many units of, of more than eight apartment housing is there in that district? And set new standards based on that. Look at the, look at the district that has the most and say, it's kind of like, in essence, turning the whole idea of affordable housing, which is a statewide program, into a local program, saying, we can't, we can't expand this district necessarily, because this district right now is carrying 80% of the weight of Stratford with, with multiple units of housing. And this district has nothing. If you compare my district to district three, it's, it's a no-win situation. My district deserves more multiple-family housing if we're going to talk about a balanced way, approach to Stratford. Now, that gets into really dicey questions and it's, that is its own battle, but if you want to talk about what solution would work, above and beyond what we have right now, which is a non-functioning statute, that doesn't mean anything, hasn't meant anything for probably 10 or 20 years from what I've learned about reading it, looking at it. It would seem to me that we need to change the paradigm, shift it and look at it in a different way. So that's my two cents. It doesn't offer a solution, but I think that what we, I cannot see any reasonable way of looking at 5.3 and say, saying that it's workable in this year for Stratford.
Okay.
It's a failed policy at this point.
Any other comments? Mr. Staley?
Of course. I do agree with some, but not all. The, you can't take district 10, district 11, well, district six is, and we're, what, 90% populated?
Yeah.
In our land?
Yep.
So, to take buildings down, to put up apartment buildings, now you have a traffic situation, you have cars, you have, you're going to have to have public transportation. There's a lot to review on that. Not just taking down houses and putting up eight units that have no way of getting out of there unless they buy a car. And how are they going to be qualified to park all these cars? So, yeah, there is a lot to think about. And I do believe we do have to take another view, but nothing, nothing rash. Thank you.
I'm going to add something and I think our planning and zoning intern actually has a, has a comment as well, so I want to give her an opportunity if it's okay with the commission. You know, I think that it's okay to keep this regulation as it is, but there needs to be a cohesive rationale for why we're doing it. If someone was to say to me, you know, I'm all for apartments, apartments to be spread out through the town in a way where, you know, where our incomes, I'm sorry, our neighborhoods have more diversity based on income. However, at the time, currently, we are trying to focus on Stratford Center and we want to see more of those apartments to be focused in Stratford Center where we're, where we're concentrating our resources, concentrating, investing in our infrastructure. And once we start to get closer towards a, you know, 50% buildout of our downtown, then we say, okay, now it's time to fix section 5.3 and allow some more development in other areas of town. And I think that's kind of, that's a rational thought and that's something that I would, I would understand that position. It's just not doing anything is, that was my concern for, for, for the town and wanting to change this section. So, it's not that it has to be changed, but I think that there needs to be that stance behind it and a rationale as to why, why the town's taking the position of either action or no, no action.
But didn't, haven't we determined that 5.3, there is no buildable area, according to what we set 5.3 up to be? There are no districts in those original 10 districts or eight, whatever it was. There is no buildable apartments in any of those districts. There are, anything built is by exception.
Correct, but by the, the TOD is exempt from section 5.3.
It, which it could still be.
Exactly. It still could be.
Or it could become its own district.
Yeah. It still should be.
Either that or we could say it becomes its own district. My only final comment is, there's not probably, there's probably as many apartment buildings, apartment multi-unit housing in district 10 as there is in a lot of the other districts. Right. When you, when you take, nine and 10 are incredibly heavy with already in that sense.
That's correct. But I think Avalon, oh, no, I'm sorry, Oranoke, did that go in under age restricted? Was that? It's 50. Age restricted, so I don't think that those actually counted towards this section 5.3, no. I think statutorily they're exempt.
Avalon does over on James Barne Road.
Does not count towards this, no. No, I, I don't believe that it does. Avalon, I'm Cut Spring.
Right.
Yeah. I don't believe that it does. I can double-check that, but I.
Why would that be exempt?
I just don't think that when you use the mechanism, the state statute mechanism, that it doesn't apply to any zoning, that's part of the reason.
Affordable housing statute?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And, and the age restricted, if they, if, and I don't know exactly how Oranoke got approved, but my guess is that it was, went under the age restricted statute that allows higher density in certain areas as long as you're following certain guidelines and allowing for age restricted.
The last discrimination allowed in health, 55 plus.
Did you want to say something?
So, as someone who is looking to buy a house, my husband and I are shopping for homes. We're not buying houses, people my age, who are the people you want to be coming into Stratford, who are the young professionals, just fresh out of college, getting their masters. We're the ones that's going to keep Stratford alive and we don't buy houses. We want condos and we want apartments. They're lower to maintain, they're less costly and they provide that level of freedom that we seek. And I understand that Stratford is built on a lot of traditions and a lot of, you know, this is how we like our community, but if we like our community one way and the world is changing around us and we fail to change with it, then we get left behind. And either way, doing it too quickly or doing it too slow, too abruptly or too slowly will lead to, I think, a position nobody wants to see Stratford in. There's a, I don't know the name of it, the develop, the new development in Bridgeport, it's right behind Bassborough Shops. A friend, yeah, there, you know, they started out as affordable housing and those were their first set of applications, because a couple of my friends actually live there. But, you know, apartments just don't necessarily mean renting. You could do affordable home buying if you want to keep a certain stature to your community. I completely understand that, but I think that's something that is very important and needs to be thought about just as far as keeping the community alive and not falling into a state of just being left behind.
I, I think that's a point well taken regarding millennium, millennials, but quite honestly, I think most people, I, I know when I was 20, 25, I was living in an apartment too. I think that's an age thing. I know they all want to say millennials are different, but I, I think actually, that's what you can afford at that age, you know. So it, it's a point well taken. The question and why 5.3 was put in way, way back in the 70s is that we're 90% developed. Now what do we do and where do we go and how high do we go and things like that? But one thing we'd have to do is change the 5.3 to go anywhere, you know, to be able to do anything.
I'd like to add to what I was saying regarding, you know, it's a 20, a lot of people also sell their houses when they become to a certain age.
Yes, they do, yeah.
Try to live into apartments, so you, I think you'd be able to catch both markets at a good time as well with that, so, yeah.
It's a sticky wicket, as they say. It's a tough one, because you want to get it right. But I, I actually like your thought of looking at it, at least to start, if we're going to make a change with 5.3 is to look at each of the 10 districts and see how developed they are, if there is any land.
I think.
That's any factors?
Yeah.
And I think part of it is fear, that everybody is protecting their neighborhoods from change. And what we, what we ought to do is find out where we really are right now. I mean, I, I live on Freeman, developer came in, bought a farmhouse, tore it down and built two houses. I didn't necessarily like it, but he, he managed to fit them in in a way that it actually has some context to my neighborhood. Once it's, three years later, it actually fits now and I, I go by it without thinking about it. I think we're missing out on the important parts of this is, how do we integrate these into all the communities so that I don't have to live, leave my sixth district when I get another 10 years older? I'd love to see a condo that I could move into and I'm fortunate that there is a senior place around the corner from me. Maybe I could just pick up and move a block away, but in any case, I, I think that what we have to find a way is to defuse the resistance to this, take away, find a way to remove some of the fear. And I think by being realistic about it, we could actually say, your neighborhood already has this in it. I think, I, I don't know how we go about digging up those statistics though. That's not in, that's not in census data, right? We couldn't pull that up by census tract, so.
You could also look at GPS to see available property.
Well, yeah, I mean, you, you could do a, you know, cross-study based on, through GIS, based on, you know, number of, anyway. Based on the number of units and you've run that data through the assessor's office.
And you could do all that through the GIS data portal of the state?
Is that a project that's, your department could conceivably accomplish, given enough time?
It is. And, and I know Ms. Young has experience in GIS and I think that's something that we should, I can talk about with her. I also want to expose her to some other things other than GIS, since that's what she did last year, but I think it's something that we could probably do pretty easily, as long as it doesn't, we don't, we don't spend too, too much time on it, right?
I, I will leave that up to you.
And I, and I, and I say that out of respect to exposing Ms. Young to as much of the, some new things in the planning world as possible, not that I don't want to do it.
That's fair.
Is that okay, as far as a, a plan to move forward?
Yeah.
Yes.
Something that I had mentioned to Jay Walaga too was that I understand the whole concern of there's just no land available, but if, you know, just a thought to mull over in your head while you think about this is, Bridgeport is doing a lot of regentrification to their downtown area. That is going to bring in young professionals very quickly at a very high rate once these, once these projects are done. And if they are very successful, especially if MGM comes down to Bridgeport and all of those things happen, a lot of people are going to swarm this area. And I think Stratford would want to have somewhat of a first pick in terms of who is where and what, you know, is, like, how they can almost, I guess, compete with Bridgeport. And I know you're concerned about the parking and stuff and that's where Mr. Watson said the whole, you know, or was it Mr. Stanley, Staley? Staley, okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Staley about, I'm not sure, don't remember which one of you said it, about the underground parking or having buildings on stilts and stuff like that. But that is also a very interesting way to think about that too.
Well, I think let Mr. Hibansky and Ms. Young work on this project and we'll keep track of it, I'll, it's not true, it'll take a little while.
Yeah, hopefully it lasts a bit longer.
Oh, perfect. Great. Okay, there's nothing else on that? Bon release request? The erosion incentive control plan?
No new applications.
Bon release request?
No new bon release requests.
Have implementation plan starting with Greenway project?
So, I was included in a meeting with the Greenway Extension Project kickoff meeting that was held a week ago, two weeks ago. And we met with the consultant, the town engineer who's PMing the project from the town side, asked me to join. asked me to join, we looked at the overall layout that's currently being considered. I'm still waiting to get the the drafts sent to me so I can kind of put together some notes and send them initially back to the consultant. And, you know, I know that they have multiple, well, actually, I shouldn't say multiple. I know they have a public participation meeting to be scheduled. I I don't know when, but I think that we should be expecting to hear something about that soon.
Mr. Watson, do you have anything else?
Nothing.
Were you at the extension?
No. I did on your work.
You are on the Greenway, right? Can we make sure that?
Yeah, I would recommend that you reach out to the town, if you're on the Greenway Committee, and I know that you are. I would recommend that you reach out to the town engineer, since they're managing the project. I'm there kind of assisting. I don't want to step on anybody's toes about who should and shouldn't, who's supposed to be at meetings, who's not. That's John Casey.
John, Ms. Wolf Bailey.
Do we have a master plan as to where it's going to be in the end?
Well, there's a pathways plan, and, you know, it's, it's general. You know, it's a general layout, and I would say that taking a few glances at it, a lot of the proposed paths were probably pretty ambitious, based on, you know, the town budget, what the town willing to pay for. Unfortunately, you just can't get grants for everything.
Right.
So, yes, there is, there is a master plan for for the pathways.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on the Greenway? Mr. Watson?
I just want to make one comment that the Nichols Road, Barnum Avenue rebuild is almost complete, and they did not include any, any planning for a Greenway. Sidewalks are four feet wide.
Is that a state?
That's a state DOT project, which they had said they were going to include. Ten percent of that project should have been, or one percent of it at least, should have been put into the Greenway.
How can we?
So one more project gets built in this town without, that's why we, we're never going to have the money to pay for it ourselves.
I would just say that I I share your frustration, but the town has no plan of a pathway going there. So it it is, well, I'm frustrated as well. You know, the town hasn't devised and put together and had the engineering done for a pathway to go through there. So it would be difficult, I think, for the the state in order to, in order for the state to really design anything in unless they know it's connected. I mean, we've got the.
Then why, let me just make one other comment. Then why did they do it, put it, put it in on Stratford Road? There's no, it's no more, our our pathway there is as tentative as it is on Nichols.
Where?
In front of three roads, two roads.
Two roads, the new turnaround or?
Yeah, the turnaround.
Roundabout or whatever it's called.
That's what I'm saying, is we just have no coordination of this kind of things. We're, we are letting our opportunities to get the state to pay for it with their funds, which their laws say they have to do. They keep slipping by again and again and again. We are losing out.
Well, that might be something we can talk to the mayor about also with, you know, as to how we can coordinate all these plans through all the various departments and make sure that the various departments know, you know, some of these plans that are out there.
I'm so, I'll be so happy when we get a planner on staff.
Well, that.
Because I know that part of this problem is exactly that, that all the hard work that was done in previous years was maintained and built upon. Now it's kind of fallen apart and people don't recognize even where it is. I mean, we have plans, solid plans that go back to two thousand eight, two thousand nine, which is where we got the money to build what we have now. It was built on top of existing plans.
We also have new people, and and so you have to start with the top and and make sure that they get the information.
Excuse me, sorry, I that's, I I don't need to say anything more about it, but I, that's my take on what I see.
That's a good point that we want to make sure we bring up with the the mayor and her staff. Anything else on the Greenway? Complete Streets?
So the Complete Streets is expected to go out to the bit, go out to the public for bidding. That's the final engineered design. We were hoping to get it out today, but I never had a chance to actually review the final, final, final draft. So I'll take a look at that tomorrow morning. I'll send it back to our NPO and give it the, give it the go-ahead for it to go out, go out and get some, some proposals to come in. So that'll be out for, I think, thirty-six days, end of July. And at that point, we'll gather all, in all the bids, and we've got our, our selection team put together. We have Commissioner Watson will be sitting on that along with some other folks, some other town, town officials, and decide, hopefully within a week or two, do some interviews and select somebody and get going on the design. Stratford Center, so that's great progress. Just in dovetailing on top of that, with some of the movement at the state level, we have heard, although has not been confirmed by DOT yet, that the lotsip money, the two million dollars that we were awarded for the implementation of our Stratford Center project, the lotsip program, which was in jeopardy, is now almost certainly going forward, and we should expect our, our official notice of award for that money, which is, that's, that's big news.
That's good. Any questions on Complete Streets? Okay, coastal resiliency plan?
Yeah, so we're, no, no new updates, except that we are still waiting to hear back from FEMA regarding our eligibility for the CRS program. We were waiting on some revised elevation certificates that we had a tough time chasing down homeowners and engineers who had to do some revisions. That that stalled us by about two months. We finally got the final piece, the final elevation certificate for property, and that was sent off to the FEMA coordinator two weeks ago. And we haven't heard back. I followed up twice, still haven't heard back, but we'll keep, we'll keep at it. We're hoping in fall that we'll actually be fully enrolled into the CRS program.
Okay, any questions, comments? Mr. Watson?
I have a quick one. Have we, has there been any other discussion about the WPCA and the Dyke completion? Under resilient, there was talk at some point of us qualifying for our, having the ability to apply for a grant for the complete, that third completion that needs to happen still. Nothing?
No, we, we're still trying to put together our resiliency team to get people to commit to time, town staff to be on the team so that it's not one person dealing with everything. It's just too much for one person. Not, not, not only that, but there's just a lot of things that I just don't have the technical knowledge of in terms of, you know, engineering and building code. There's just stuff that I don't, there's a lot of stuff I don't know, and there's a lot of stuff within that, so. No, we have not, I have not heard anything about any applications. That doesn't mean that it's not going on in maybe the engineering department or some other office. But I could certainly check.
If 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 you look into it, could you ask specifically if anybody from the WPCA staff is being involved in this? Because they seem to have a good, very good understanding of water levels in their areas in terms of storms, the, the, unless they've all left now, but in.
Not for WPCA, that's. Who's W, who's WPCA now?
I don't know. It's, it was stall, stalling.
Yeah, no, it's somebody else now.
I don't know the new, I don't know the new person there.
Hyde, Tom Hyde? No, there's a new superintendent, WPCA superintendent.
He just got certified, I know that.
Yeah, I think it's.
He had to get an upgraded certification.
Okay, and so you want me to follow up and ask them?
I think he'd be great on if, if that's, I can't imagine a project going ahead better than the WPCA. It's got to be their priority. We would be sunk if we lost that down there.
The project was, again, sorry.
There, there's a dam that's completed a third of the way around. It needs the, our two-thirds almost, but it needs the completion in order to secure it during thousand-year storms, which are coming, coming every other year.
Another Sandy.
Right.
Okay, any other comments, questions on coastal resiliency? Okay, other items. One of them is, I want to thank Mr. Hibansky for getting the information from Fairfield, town of Fairfield regarding inclusionary zoning. This is something they've had since two, twenty fifteen. And I asked him to get this, because as we talk about the 5.3 ordinance or or section 5.3, this might be something we might consider or some form of this so that at some point we can meet our affordable housing criteria, which, do you know what our percentage is now?
I think we're at like five point seven percent.
And what do we have to be at?
Ten percent to reach a moratorium.
So it might be something we can consider. But we can take that up at further, you know, future meetings. Are there any other items?
May I ask Jay one question on, on the Fairfield planning piece? It says affordable to households earning not more than eighty percent of the, of the area median income for Bridgeport, Connecticut metro dis, metro rent area. So it's not just Stratford's, it's not just Stratford's medium, it's the whole region's median income, right? How does that reflect based if we just looked at it under Stratford?
I don't know, to be honest with you. I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure what the HMFA is for the region. And off the top of my head, I know, actually, I I would, I know those numbers, the household median income is in the housing profile that we provided. Somehow mine didn't make it into my packet.
Household median income for Stratford is sixty-six, eight, eight, six. For Fairfield County is eighty-four thousand.
See, we're talking about a twenty percent difference. So I I just, that's the only thing that I was thinking in terms of, this read well when I, in my reading of it. I thought this is a really concise, clear. I don't know if eight would be a, the number seems to be more consistent with what we're talking about in terms of buildables, because we're not talking about as big, as big a units. If we could find a way to make that work, then it would fit much nicer with everything else that we've been talking about. And also the, the HUD statistics that if we were to say, based on our economy, not on the larger metro economy, I don't know if that, how that would change, and it would make it harder to achieve or, or easier to achieve. It makes sense. The only other thing that could be included, and I read a fabulous study that's taking place under, oh, I forget the name of the pro, I forget the name. But in any case, what they are doing is they are, they are separating parking space costs from apartment construction in order to create affordable housing. So that the fifty thousand dollars, that's the usual expected cost for a parking space, they're saying if you sell this to a senior, this condo, without a parking space, then we can make that space be fifty thousand dollars, that apartment be fifty thousand dollars cheaper. Then you can lease or rent parking spaces based on need. And I thought about that, and said, God, that changes the formula incredibly. If we're talking about a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar apartment that someone's looking at, you're suddenly back down to two-hundred thousand, which puts them in the range of a lot of our low-end, single-family homes. It really makes, it would, it would create a whole new market that might be something that everybody would be interested in looking at and thinking about in terms of thinking about new ways of doing what little we can do to affect a change. So I'll just throw that out there also. If I can go back and find it, I will print it out and send it to you. It was a great piece of reading.
That would be helpful. So we can add that to our discussion when we get into the section 5.3 as well, the whole housing and affordable housing. Have you ever spoken with Fairfield's planning and zoning as far as how that provision, how this is working?
I have, and I'm trying to remember what our conversation was. Let's see, they're actually considering they're adding their set-asides, I'm sorry, increasing their set-aside from ten percent to fifteen percent. I didn't ask necessarily how it was going, but I think that's a pretty good indicator of, of, of what they're seeing. One, maybe they would like to reach their goals maybe a bit quicker because they're seeing people take advantage of this, and they're maybe tweaking, turning up the dial slightly to maybe take advantage of that. But other than, other than that anecdotal, you know, kind of assessment of what I saw, I didn't really ask how it, how it's working, no.
Okay, interesting.
I would say it's been around for two years, though, two-plus years.
Yeah.
And, you know, usually if something's not working after a year, it goes the way of the dodo.
Okay, well, we'll look at that. Okay, if there are no other items, we'll go on to members' comments and concerns. And Mr. Staley, maybe you want to tell us about the work that you did?
Interesting project. The, I was quite amazed at how inefficient the system is and how it just, it grew and never changed. And nobody ever looked at, was it, did it work? It doesn't work. The, after the second car stops at this light on Main Street, the third, fourth, and fifth cannot see the signs. The, and then when the light turns green, they're gone. Nobody in the other direction can see anything. So I also looked into, you read, I've also looked into electronic LED signage that could be done with Wi-Fi and so forth, starts at around ten thousand. But, you know, I I talked with the police traffic commission officer who said that he thought it would be a, a problem. Then you have residential neighbors, living, residential people, living there that the light would be on when you turn it off. So there's a lot of complications in going electronic. The, I talked with the town of Shelton, which I've noted in the minute or in my report. And they have five locations they allow A-frames, but they must get a permit. There's no charge for the permit because they're nonprofits. But it says what's, what they're going to do and where it's going to be and how long. So the, at this point, I think we need some more creative thinking. There's seven signs there right now. If those seven signs were turned so the traffic could see them and they went up to maybe the gazebo, it would, people might see them. But I don't think that's the ultimate solution.
That would be pretty ugly, too. That would be pretty ugly, too. I, I appreciate very much you're doing all this, uh, research on, on the signs. Uh, a couple of things, Paradise Green is not the only area that, but Paradise Green and West Broad are the two areas that are permitted through the planning and zoning.
Okay, I didn't get a chance to talk to Jay. I told him that and I apologize, but.
So, currently, we, we do have a permitting system.
Okay.
I think, is it?
Are we required an application?
Yeah, you have to fill out an application. You have to be a not-for-profit. Uh, I think we're allowed 10 signs at each location?
I don't think there's a cap. Uh, I, I don't, I don't fill out that permit. I've maybe done once and one in my three years here, it's usually staff that are doing them, so I'd have to read through it, but, uh, to my, I don't think there is a cap. But if you, if you say there is, I, I, I believe you.
I, I thought there was, uh, and I filled out the form several times, so, um, I, I think it's, uh, a lot of your points are well, well-taken. I don't think any A-frame that you put up is gonna be seen by 90% of the people who drive by.
Right.
Uh, that's why one of the thoughts was to look at the LED, which is much more, um, pronounced, you know, you can see that work clearly.
I did discuss that with the police department and, um, I said, well, maybe if it was up by the traffic light, doesn't have to be that big.
Yeah.
Um, they don't want anything to do with it.
Yeah, I also know that the fire department has put up an LED sign periodically. Um, yeah, I know, I'm sorry. I didn't say that. So, it, it, I find that interesting that, you know, one group is allowed to do it and another group isn't, but, uh, what I'd like to, instead of taking a lot of time, uh, looking at this, I've been a little bit, uh, preoccupied. So, maybe after this meeting, we could set up a time to meet with, uh, with Jay.
Sure.
And go through this and maybe do some of that out-of-the-box thinking.
Good. Thank you. Just to update that, I, I read through the section. I don't think we, we have a cap, uh, for a number of, of signs. Um, at least it's not here in the regulation. There may be something on our application that says that there is, but I don't see it here.
Mr. Watson?
The one thing that the town could do, though, is create the A-frame. No, I'm serious, we could.
It's a cost. It, there, actually, there was a plan to make, uh, like a big A-frame with little sections on it. It didn't go very far.
But we could make attractive, you know, metal colonial-looking for Broad Street that, that everybody gets an eight, eight-by-14 sign or whatever and it slips in and that's it. You, you, you use that. At least it would be more attractive and more uniform.
Maybe more readable.
I really appreciate what was set up, though, about Paradise, because I, I drive by all the time and I don't even, I don't even try to read the signs. There's one spot and you, you found it, that you noticed the signs, period. Um, and usually you get it, you can, you're there long enough to see pancake dinner and you don't get the rest of the information. The only place that it does work is at Broad Street, because you have, you have lights from either side where you're stopped waiting for the lights. And there you could actually see the signs more frequently. So, maybe what we need to do is to, is to say, let's find several locations in town where there is dead-end traffic that, that, because it seems to me that's short of going, even if we were to put up electronic signs in Paradise, you still don't have any traffic that's sitting there looking at it. The, the, it, it doesn't work and electronics requires graphics and requires someone who can design the focus into it, or it, it doesn't work. No one wants to see buzzed type on a, I mean, fire department excuse from the discussion, but no one really wants to know, that, that does not get people's attention.
I think we, um, as you suggested, we get together and do a little think tank. Yeah, because I did look at our website, our town website, and we can add a bar that could take them to their webs, their Facebook or somebody else. So, there are other options that we could help nonprofits. We have no reason to, other than being a community.
True, I, I think, though, um, if you drive by those two locations, number one, the signs, many of them are not readable because they're, they're just designed improperly. Uh, number two, uh, they're all shapes, sizes, they're all over the place. Uh, it's hard to keep up with whether they're not-for-profits or profit-making groups because they slip in all the time. Uh, from a maintenance standpoint, the more A-frames you put up, the harder it is to take them down, cut the grass, and put them back up. And they're very, uh, it's inefficient.
Yes, and they also, um, Shelton, I talked with the Parks and Recs Department and they, he, he told me that they, um, he spends so much time just taking things off telephone poles.
Yes, which is illegal.
Yes, and, um, they do have a finding system, but they did not say if they use it or not.
I think we have one, too, don't we?
Not in our office, you know, and I always heard, I was always under the understanding that the telephone poles anyways, you know, that's not town property. It's, it's utility property that's in the town right of way, so, so you can't find, but I don't know.
Well, they told me the.
They may have an interesting.
They told me that the utility companies pass that responsibility on to the municipality. And I think they have three locations in Shelton that are state-controlled, but they passed it on to the town also.
Who do we get it passed on to?
I don't know. Nobody else.
They passed it.
Okay, we'll, we'll set up a meeting before you leave, okay? Uh, any other member comments or concerns?
I just want to thank John Staley for doing this kind of work. I appreciate it very much.
Yes, thank you, yes. Okay, if there are no other comments or discussion, entertain a motion to adjourn. Don't all speak at once.
So, move.
Mr. Vigliati.
Second.
Second by Mr. Watson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for, for everybody for all the work that you've done. As well as you, Jay.